It is 7:04 and I hereby call to order the May 2015 meeting of the Village of Tivoli Board of Trustees. Would you please join me and rise for the pledge allegiance to our flag?
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you very much. We'll start with the clerks' report. Clerk Gennella?
The clerk's office sold 490 trash bags. We attended one ZDA meeting and one planning board workshop. There were three heroes. We prepared water and sewer bills that will be mailed out on June 1st. We also prepared tax bills which will be mailed tomorrow and will be closed on Monday, May 25th for the Memorial Day holiday.
Thank you. And you worked very hard on a newsletter that will be included in the water bill, so look for that. Also, an upcoming event next Monday, the 25th of May is of course Memorial Day. And at 10:00 a.m. there will be a ceremony at the Dead Church with the American Legion there. So please come out and help us remember those who've given their lives for our country. That's next Monday, 10:00 a.m. at the Dead Church on that day there. South Side. Yeah, they move that around every year. This year it's on the south side. Moving on to the treasures report I have here. Out of the general fund, we are paying $36,881.57. The water fund, $5,684. Sewer fund, $2,421.75. And capital fund, $1,325.10. The expendable trust, $51.92. For a grand total of $46,364.34. Is there a motion to accept the treasures report?
So?
Is there a second?
Oh, yes.
All in favor?
Aye.
The report is accepted. I think we pretty much know there's going to be a second, a motion and a second on either side of me all night here, so. Payment of the bills. Is there a motion to instruct the treasurer to pay the bills?
I move.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. Moving on to zoning and building report. Trustee Ezra Di and trustee Schneider cannot join us tonight, so I will take a crack at the zoning report. And it's in a new format here in my binder because this is the new software, I believe. So it prints it out a little differently. Not quite as easy for me to read here, but we had a couple permits issued. And as far as incidents, always the most interesting part. We had a complaint that property on the southwest corner of the intersection up here on 9G is being used for an impromptu driveway coming out onto Broadway. Our code enforcement officer contacted Steve Gill of the Dutchess County DPW who stated that a letter would be sent to the property owner. The county only allows one driveway on that parcel and there's already an established driveway onto 9G. And that spontaneous car path spilling out onto Broadway is neither safe nor legal, so. We have Friendship Street, a complaint from a neighbor that an owner built a wall between the property. There was an inspection which showed that the wall is in line with the foundation and is being used as a retaining wall for front porch repair. And we gathered that that means it's a temporary wall during the construction. And lastly, we had a home in the village that was inspected and the building interior was found that it was not fit to be inhabited. That homeowner was ordered to begin cleaning up the property and until such time as it is deemed adequately clean, it is not fit to be occupied. That is the zoning report. Clerk Gennella, was there any correspondence?
No.
Okay. Moving on to regular business. I don't know if you've got a copy of the agenda. During Bryan Cranis' tenure, he had started a nice tradition, in my opinion, of soliciting public comment at the beginning of the regular business such that citizens would have a chance to comment on what was about to be voted on before it was voted on. That was something that we used to have a motion to break with regular business, open up that comment period, come back. But since we want to continue that and we're going to do it and everyone up here is always eager to hear what you have to say, we're just making it, it'll always be the first order of regular business, is a chance for public comment on the other agenda items. So at this time, the public has the floor if there are any comments on items two through six here. Just to mention them, we have several appointments for Panda TV, a representative for the village, Panda. The emergency successor, a representative for the village on the intermunicipal task force. We will be having a motion to authorize the clerk to collect the taxes. And we have a number of budget modifications that we will get to also. Are there any comments from the public at this time? Seeing none, we'll move on to regular business number two. Panda TV, you're all familiar with it. Lots of you watch it. Great thing. Every municipality has a representative on the Panda board. Our previous rep was Dana Weidman, who is stepping down. And first I'd like to thank her for her many years of service in that role. And I'm pleased to announce that I will be appointing a successor, Chris Garza. And Chris is in Florida until tomorrow and couldn't be here tonight to be thanked in person for taking on this responsibility, but we thank her in her absence. Chris Garza, Tivoli's new Panda appointment. Number three. Every year we need to collect the taxes. So this is a 2015-2016 tax warrant. I ask at this time if there is a motion to authorize the clerk to collect the 2015-16 tax warrant in the amount of $450,275. Do I need to make a distinction between the taxes and the liens? Okay. About $5,000 of that is liens from the water and sewer bills added to the property tax, so. Is there a motion for that?
I'll move.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. Number four, emergency successor. This is a new thing that started about a year ago. If there is ever an event, and we hope there isn't, which creates a situation where neither the mayor nor the deputy mayor can perform their duties, emergency successor is the third person who would assume those powers in a dire situation. It's a mayoral appointment, not subject to board approval, just like the deputy mayor. And after discussion with the board, I'm appointing trustee Susan Ezra Di as the emergency successor. Again, I hope she never has to fulfill that role, but if it comes to that, we're in a lot of trouble already. But I thank Susan for taking on that responsibility and other trustees. Everyone was willing to do it. It's never an easy choice for me to choose between these trustees because they're all very capable. Number five. Intermunicipal task force. Similar thing, similar to the Panda, the village of Tivoli gets to pick a representative to represent our interests on that intermunicipal task force. And I have asked trustee Emily Major to be that individual. She has accepted. And earlier today, I thought if someone asked me, "What is the intermunicipal task force?", I probably couldn't tell them, so I had to do some research today so I can speak intelligently about it. The intermunicipal task force was established in 2005. It is the village of Tivoli, village of Red Hook. And they were originally created to try and implement the content of the town plan of 1993 that had to do with protecting agricultural space, history and historic preservation and zoning. So I'm going to let trustee Major tell us a little bit about her. You have one meeting so far.
I did. I had one meeting. There was a visit from Chris and Claude Dinclos of Historic Red Hook who came to talk about the possibility of an agricultural historic district. Basically, yeah, what Joel said, it's about keeping the zoning up to date with the comprehensive plan. I look forward to learning more. One meeting was not enough to get my mind around at all.
All right. Well, we thank you again for taking on that role and look forward to hearing about what the task force is doing. Last item of regular business is a resolution for budget modifications. You all have these modifications in your binders. For the enlightenment of the public, we are in our final month of the fiscal year. Our new fiscal year begins June 1st. And at this late stage, a lot of budget lines are spent or spent away entirely or some fortunately are still pretty healthy. It's very important that invoices get billed to the appropriate line and that the line has enough money in it to cover that invoice. So from time to time, the board of trustees needs to shift money from line to line. And this month we have quite a few because we're getting down to the end of the year. So some of these are, we had some more bills from the village engineer. We took money from the buildings line, moved it over there. The town of Red Hook has gotten a $10,000 trails grant to do a planning for trails throughout the entire township. The town is going to put up $8,000 of that. They've asked Bard College to put up $1,000. And they've asked each of the villages to put up $500. So I'm pleased to say that Tivoli is going to be able to contribute our $500 because we're taking a little bit out of the police line which at this, the last month, actually still has some money in it. So Tivoli will not be sponging off of Red Hook's hard work. We're going to benefit from that trails plan as well. I'm really glad we can make our small but symbolic contribution. We had some more CHIPS money that needs to be identified. And then a number of budget mods to get enough money into the essentially lines dealing with the park. We're moving some of the remaining money from the summer camp last year into the park bathroom line. Sadly, we've still had vandalism. This is dealing with some vandalism from this past year. This is not recent occurrences. But you know, they smashed the very expensive time locks. Those are, it's a $1,600 repair. So everyone should know just how much that's costing us and how offensive and expensive this vandalism is. And also, there have been some budget mods to keep enough money in for all the infield dirt and playground mulch which is coming in. So, and then there's one in the water fund. We had another unexpected bill that put us about $25 under. So we had to move a little bit of money over from distribution and transmission. So the board has had ample time to look through these modifications. We've discussed them in the workshop. And is there any formal language for doing the resolution, clerk? Okay. Is there a motion to accept these budget modifications?
So?
Is there a second?
There is.
Any discussion? All in favor? And the modifications are accepted. The next regular board meeting will be Wednesday, June 17th, right here in this room at 7:00, preceded by a workshop over in the mayor's office at 6:00. And there will be a regular workshop on Wednesday, June 10th at 7:00 in the mayor's office. And it's always nice to have you here at those meetings, this meeting tonight. Moving on to committee reports. We're down a few, so we might have to pick up their work. We'll start with, excuse me, deputy mayor Bruno.
Thank you. Just to, you know, cover what the bulk of, or some of the things that we covered with the modifications. If you have been going through, you'll see there is activity in the park. We did get infield dirt for the field. And there were players in the softball league, the men's softball league that came in and spread out, 25 ton of dirt on the field. With the damage that was caused from a telephone pole that went down during the winter. There were lights that came down. We have had three telephone poles donated to the village, so we didn't have to purchase any. There was some more players, and I have a list here. There were league players that came and helped with fixing the fence. We spent six hours on a Saturday. They came over and fixed the fence for us. And those gentlemen were Paul Tanner, Cody Coons, Mike McGrider, and Jason Shaw. And actually, a young woman, Whitney Young is her name. So we were all in the park and fixing fences and it was great to have them there that day. Paul Tanner and I guess he worked with his Pete Jennings with the help of Kevin Silvestris' tractor, spread the dirt. And Steve Palmer, who is a player in the league but also is a contractor. He, along with Alan Kulik, Mike McGrider, they came and we were able to get the materials, but they repaired the dugout free of charge. Very nice, yes. We're so appreciative of that. So that was, there was a lot of activity going on in the field. And then in the park, just yesterday morning, it's going to look so nice. We had 70 yards of certified playground cushioning mulch come in. Our guys, the DPW, will be spreading out 70 yards. It's a huge pile. But they'll treat the bases that are obviously underneath all of the playground equipment. They'll treat them and then spread out the mulch. And I think it's just going to look so much better, be great for the kids. And then also too, over in the back, you recall that bench that was built by Shane Dagan? Just this weekend, his Eagle Scout Court of Honor will take place. So that's all official. He'll receive his Eagle Scout. And if you go back and look at the bench, he does have a plaque that indicates the donors, whether it be monetary or time spent or materials that went into putting in that bench there. And it's really a nice place to sit because I found myself there at different times just listening to birds and it's pretty pleasant. A reminder too, because I know Mayor Griffith had already mentioned about Monday's Memorial Day ceremony. I believe Commander Maybee usually sets up quite a nice ceremony and memorial of all of our veterans. And Monday, June 29th through Friday, July 24th, we'll be back into summer rec with potential director and counselors in mind, but we're still accepting anyone who's interested, could drop off some information. And if there are individuals that have an interest in the program for their children, by all means, contact me through the clerk's office and we can get out registration forms and the proper immunization forms that will be required by the Department of Health. And I think that's it.
Okay. Thank you, deputy mayor. Normally trustee Ezra Di would read our water report for the month of April 2015. Special comments or remarks. Water mains were flushed on April 28th and April 30th. There are always two samples taken from the water system and tested. We had sampling locations on Spring Street and Broadway on the 14th and 20th of April. And those samples, supply samples for the microbiological results. And we do not have any violations. Always good news. There, you may have seen over on Pine Street, a small bird bath rather perpetual. That's actually a little water valve that has had a very slow leak on it since the water tower froze in February. That was just repaired this morning, so that'll be in next month's water report. But someone said, "We have the cleanest birds of any town around here", so they were taking advantage of it. The court report for the month of April 1st through 30th, 2015. Total charges received, 14. Total charges disposed, 30. Total money collected and remitted to the state comptroller in fines, $960. Surcharges, $653. Civil fees, $85 for a total of $1,698. And looking over the rest of the court report, we had overnight parking. Looks like there was one DWI. Something aggravated unlicensed driving, I would imagine that is. Sadly, it looks like there was an assault. And quite a few, no overnight parkings. And of course, a lot of these violations are from back in October, November, December. Takes a while for things to move through the court there. Trustee Major?
Okay, so to get back to the intermunicipal task force for one second. Task force met on Friday, May 15th at the Red Hook Town Hall. And one of the topics of discussion was also revised draft zoning amendments to the historic structures and districts. So that's sort of the topic on the table right now. The library. Tons of stuff is happening, tons of fantastic things as always. The revitalization project is so close to being done. They're just waiting on some comfy chairs which should be arriving in June. And I invite you all to please stop in and check it out. The new website is up and it's the same address, tivolylibrary.org. It's just, it's a new design. It looks fantastic. As for events, on May 30th, there's a plant swap here. And at the same time, there's going to be a program at Clermont which the library is partnering for. It is called Gardening with Deer. Which is not sharing your towel with them, but it's recognizing that deer are part of our landscape and how can you, how can you plant your gardens so that you're not cursing them? The book and movie club on Thursday, May 28th is going to be watching To Kill a Mockingbird with a discussion afterwards. And this is just in time for the June, I think it's June, release of Harper Lee's second book. There's an opening reception for Clermont's Wordscape event which the library has been working towards as well. And that's Sunday, June 7th at 4:00 p.m. The Paige Turner Book Club will be discussing Neil Gaiman's The Ocean at the End of the Lane on June 18th. And the book and movie selection for June 25th is Blade Runner. And there'll be a potluck supper during the movie, so bring a dish. And the last thing is that the theme for the summer reading program is Every Hero Has a Story. Bring your cospants.
Thank you. Police and law enforcement. We've had patrols increased every weekend. Trying to really stay on top of the late night noise which has chronically plagued this village for too long. We've had a number of noise violations written in the last six weeks or so. And I have, I've been out late most nights on the weekends personally, taking a look and a listen to see how we're doing here in Tivoli. And I think we're making some progress. That's going to be a long and difficult row, but that's what we're going to do. And another aspect of law enforcement, as I said in my speech last month, speeding. I think some of you have seen the police out there pulling people over. Tickets have been getting written. As far as I'm concerned, that's a campaign that's just beginning. And there's no reason, I know Tivoli's a wonderful place and you really want to get down Montgomery Streets wherever you're going, but take your time. And you know, I don't want any, anyone to complain that they got a speeding ticket because it's entirely in your hands and in your ankle. Whether you get one, it's really up to you. So know that I'm directing the sheriff's deputies to stay on top of that. And let's have a good standard in our village. It's about safety, I respect. The Riverfront Project, some of you were there. Last Thursday, the 14th, our five fabulous bright students from Rensselaer Polytechnic Institute came down to Tivoli and gave a final presentation. If you haven't heard the story, I'll do a very short version. The waterfront committee wrote a letter last September asking a number of universities if they didn't want to take a stab at the very complicated conditions we have down with our waterfront parcel. And RPI, one of the professors wrote back answering the letter, said, "This is a real good challenge. I'd like to give it to my students." And he designed an entire semester-long course using our property, our soil samples, our requirements with the railroad. And the students spent the whole semester designing a potential overpass to connect the two parcels. And you know, this is an important piece of our dream to have a waterfront park down there. The at-grade crossing would be closed, so we need to have an overpass. And the students did a very thorough job. For them, it was an opportunity to use everything they've learned in four years at RPI. And I think for those of you who were there, some of the presentation got a little technical. Kips, whatever kips are, wind loads and shear and all sorts of things. But again, we were so grateful to have them. We actually made the five of them and their professor honorary tabulions. And I gave each of them a nice certificate and the ever-covened lapel pin, yes. So thanks again to them. That document that they produced, and I want you to all remember, this is an idea. This is preliminary. This is not about to be built tomorrow. Nor could it be because as they were quick to say, "We're not licensed. We're just students." That document will be up on the village website, so you can take a look at it. It's on there already, so as soon as you go home from this meeting, read through that. Thank you, Clerk Gennella. And the Green Committee. Next time you're down at Santa Fe or down on the corner, you'll notice a lot of new plantings have gone in. We've tried for several years to get those shrubberies to take. They really take a beating. And they certainly take a beating when we're removing all the snow that gets piled there in the winter. But a few of the irises came back, a few of the daisies, and we've added some more. There are also new plantings over on Pine Street there. Sort of working on that intersection. There are a number of new plantings in the flower bed under the Memorial Park sign. Finally got some rain, so I hope these things last. I hope they take. And I want to thank the Green Committee for working on that. And also, as I had become very busy, I realized that I can't do everything. And at our last Green Committee meeting, I put to the group that we needed a new chairperson. I've done it the last four years. And our new chairperson is Mara Randville. I want to congratulate her and thank her for taking on that role. Mara has been a co-director at the community garden for the last two seasons and has a background in environmental science and is a perfect person, both for her temperament and her professional background, to lead the Green Committee. It was also decided that that would be a one-year term and that every year maybe we would pass the chair around because there are quite a few qualified people on that committee, so thanks tomorrow. And the last thing I have to say is Tivoli Community Day, August 8th. Mark your calendars over in the park. Potluck, some music, nice and simple. Come out, get together. I have met with a number of volunteers. We're going to start hammering out some details. But there's really not much to it. Show up at the park. We're all going to hang out. It's going to be really nice. Save the day, August 8th.
I forgot what then.
You have the floor.
Thank you. So there was cleanup day in Tivoli Bay on May 9th and it was sort of put together by friends of Tivoli Bay's along with the fourth annual Riverkeeper River Sweep event. And a whole bunch of garbage was hauled out of the bay. And just want to say thank you to Teresa Burke and the Red Hook Highway Department for coming and helping us get rid of it, so thank you.
At this time, we will open it up for any public comment on any topic. Mr. Christie?
Do you want to go first? She's ready.
Do you have a comment?
Oh, yeah. My name is Jackie Zacko. And I'm here to talk about the school bell. We had alumni about five or six years ago. And I have the bell in my basement. And I was afraid to put it anywhere because I was afraid someone would steal it, even though it's heavy and everything. And I did speak to Brian before, but the property situation, we didn't want to do anything until things got settled. But I had asked at that time if we could put the bell in front of the gazebo down there, out here. And he had said yes, but then the property wasn't settled yet. So I'm here tonight to see if we could do that to represent the school, which has been 150 years. which is be a hundred and fifty years old.
Hundred, one hundred.
One hundred years old, but it's a little bit older than that. But, but the white school, we had a school, a little school there before that. And it's just a little bit of history of Tivoli that I think would be nice for people to know about. And, you know, I'm gonna put a plaque up and stuff like that. But I'm just wondering if the board would let us do that.
Yeah, I think we'd be thrilled to work with you on that. You know, I think any little piece of Tivoli history that we can showcase is a great thing to do. We'd be happy to.
Do I need a permit for that now?
What we should do is, you know, exchange numbers and meet and we'll work out the details. I can't tell you right now.
I tried calling, we went on the phone and then I got all crazy. So I hung up, that's what I did. I mean, I'm born and raised in Tivoli, but I live on Nevis Road. And I do do a lot of things in Tivoli, and I have participated in a lot of stuff.
No, I'll get your number and we'll get right on it. I think that would be such a wonderful thing.
So I thought that'd be nice, and I thought you could have like the newspaper coming and go do it. I got the Bard boys is gonna do the cement work for us. And I have someone that's gonna do the carpetwork. It's not gonna be gigantic, it's just something that you could have to represent something that is here for all those years.
How big is the bell?
My husband said I'll be buried with it if I don't get it out of that basement.
Well, that'd be wonderful, thank you.
Okay, so I can have the Bard boys come and check out the property down there? And you wanna show me where you want it?
Yeah, I mean, we should, we should have a meeting and just go over everything because I'm sure there'll be a lot of little details and we wanna do it right, so.
And secondly, you know, I had spoken to some people before about the history of Tivoli. We were talking about some of the history of Tivoli. And up on North Road, where Don't Used To Be, there's a nice monument there, but you can't see it or anything. Where was the children's home at that one time? And I was wondering, you know, I was willing to get together with some people and that, if you clean it out, clean the stone up, and do something there to let people know that there's things around Tivoli. I mean, it's an awful lot in this town that people don't realize what had. And I think it'd be good if you could get some of the Bard college students that are interested in this stuff to know, know what's here. Because I've spoken to quite a few of them, they didn't even realize what was left Tivoli had as a drugstore, this and that, and everything, they never knew it. And I think that would be kind of a nice idea, even for a little pamphlet or something. I was saying about used to be where the pizza place was or with.
Yeah, you could have a little walking tour of historical.
I mean, there's a lot here in town. And Karen's very good at knowing what's around. Her mother was very involved in Tivoli years and years ago. And so, you know, the people, and some of us have still cared. I know there's not many of us around. But I was just wondering if, you know, we could maybe talk about some of that stuff too.
Absolutely, you know, and you've just named two wonderful things. And any, anything else that anyone knows or thinks of or cares about, you know, something I'm personally interested in. I think the board understands how showcasing our history is so intimately connected to being respected in your presence and transmitting these things to the future, so.
You get people, you know, I think I can get some people to, to work with and stuff like that. But also, my main concern is that monument coming into Tivoli. That really bothers me. I've never seen it look like that in all the years that I have lived in Tivoli. And I'm gonna be seventy years old, and that bothers me. I spoke to the Legion, then they told me they gave it to the village. And then I said, "Well, the village don't really have the money to maintain it. Why didn't you keep it to take care of it? It's your soldier," you know. But my main concern is that too. I think it looks terrible coming into town. I mean, that's, that really is a disgrace.
Well, I've actually been in contact with Tom.
I know you have, yeah.
And what we've done so far is we've had a landscaper take a look because some of the plantings were deemed somewhat inappropriate for, for our American veterans. So we were waiting upon, he was going to, to draw up an actual sort of like a map and a plan and try and incorporate some red, white, and blue themed flowers. And then also, with this project, we would be in contact with Cole Rockley and Mr. Wombat to come over and, yes, Bill, and to do what he can with repairing the monuments. And of course, funds are an issue. And if you recall that with the, with the benches, I had worked together with Tom and with the Legion, we had that dinner. And then the, the funds that were available that purchased the benches. So what we've talked about is having the same sort of dinner fundraiser, redo the landscaping and repair the monuments.
Well, I'm gonna speak to Tom again because I feel that they have some money and they can help give money towards it. And I've spoken to them several times and I would go after them again because there's no reason why they can't contribute to that.
Yeah.
And, because that's, you come to town.
Yeah.
And it doesn't.
Well, the new sign that you painted it.
We've got some plans out there, I also.
More people can be on it, you know, come along and help with some of the stuff you do too. Because you only can do so much, like you said, you know.
You wish I could do more.
I'm doing, I'm doing, I do it, well, you can't do everything, you know. And my other thing is, I'm having the cemetery up here, the Red Hook Cemetery. And we're going to be approaching the town of Red Hook probably next year sometime. I've already spoken to some people, but we're going to transfer it over to the town. I can't get, Tivoli can't have it because that is, it's a, it's a village and it's in the town of Red Hook. And I've had it for thirty years and I can't do it anymore. I don't have the help, and it's a lot of work. And it's not that big of a problem to take care of, but it is when you're under the state's thumb. Okay, it's under, it's state-run. And this way, the, the town will do it. They have to take it, they can't refuse it, but they might have a little problem, but they'll take it. And the funds and everything that we have, we have endowments and stuff like that, but you can't touch, you know, you can't touch some of those things. And I'll still stay on a committee to help with the burial of people so they get to know where people are supposed to be. Because I have maps and everything, and it's pretty much together now up there. But that's another thing that's coming down the road. And we're putting a new fence out. We took the old one down because it was all really in bad condition and somebody stole some of it. And, and the building is, as far as, no more, no more grants. Then again, and as soon as the paperwork gets all done, then, then we can do a little work we can do on the outside, take down those, I think, just hold them up and everything, so. So that's all gonna be taken care of. So that's a good spot for Tivoli, it's a beautiful area there. You know, it's a cemetery, but it is lovely, it's history. It's on the historical list, the cemetery and the church. The outhouses. Yeah, the outhouses are, it's, it's really, it's unbelievable. So there's a lot of history there. So it's things that we can think of can draw people around to.
Okay, well, thank you.
Thank you, I'll work it together on that.
Absolutely. Want to go?
Yes. Go, go ahead, Tom.
Mr. Christie?
All right, just gonna touch on a couple things for our department, so. So far for the month of May, from May first and now, we've had nineteen calls so far. There are twenty-two people who qualify for the low sat program, which you're probably aware of by now. The other thing I know, I know about the overhead doors on the, on the ramp. They were damaged by a truck or something that backed into them. We got the estimate today. It's for thirty-six hundred and thirty-seven dollars to replace them. With that being said, there's a call into the insurance company for the adjuster to come down and do whatever he's gotta do so we can go ahead and replace the panels. Other than that, it's been pretty quiet. Nobody touched the sign since our article came out.
You had a nice article in there, free press?
Boy, free press.
Title of which I cannot say here.
That's right, we can't say it on TV. And so far, so good. Cameras are in the works, they'll, they'll be up. And I suggest if you're having problems over at the park, that wouldn't be a bad idea to have someone here.
Yeah, we discussed it earlier, yeah.
You know, when you talk sixteen hundred dollars, replace locks, you know.
Well, part of that too is with the, with the timed locks, like in the spring, they would be programmed to open at a particular time and then automatically lock at a particular time. There's a handheld device that Jim or Cody would be able to do that themselves rather than having someone come back at different times throughout the season. So having that device will save for this person coming back and if there are any issues with electricity going out and then, but the timing gets, gets off as well. Our guys can take care of that rather than having someone repeatedly come out to reset the locks.
And on those doors, you imagine that's from someone turning on the ramp?
Yeah, that's from somebody backing up on a ramp and hitting the doors. It was last Monday. Monday afternoon at three o'clock, when we came up for a call, those doors were damaged. When we came up for our house on that night, Monday night, after we closed the doors, we noticed the doors were, were damaged. So it's turning on the ramps, I mean, we put it up on the sign. No turning on the ramps, stay off the ramps.
Yeah, and I also wanna follow up with you that I have now placed three emails and two phone calls to the county since I've taken office six weeks ago to try and follow up with the striping out there. I've not heard back, so it might be time to talk to our former mayor in his new role and see if he can make things start moving.
You need the guy at the county, with the boss down at the county?
Yeah, well.
I'll make, I'll text him tonight.
You know, it's frustrating when you're trying to get responses, you know, so. But I think that if we ever are able to get that area striped, it might help one or two people not turn on the ramp because I saw people turning yesterday.
I, I think if they, some kind of striping on the ramp, then maybe they'll get the message, even on, on the, doesn't pass the sidewalk the first section. Hopefully they get off, I mean, we could always put spikes.
And hopefully.
But, but our guys would be the ones that get the flat tires. But, yeah, other than that, nothing else.
When you get that striping money for the paint, is there a possibility you're still putting crosswalk here for the kids?
Yes, I have a little update on that.
Good.
I met a week and a half ago with our engineer and the contractor and the subcontractor who painted the crosswalks here at Four Corners, which we had done last November. Because in my opinion, and I think most of you will agree, an awful lot of that paint came off in just four months. And I know that we had a very severe winter, there was a lot of sand and salt, a lot of plows. But it was just too hard for me to believe that that much paint should've come off that quickly. So it is actually under a guarantee of one year. So I had them come back and I talked to them about getting it repainted, that's gonna happen. And while we were having that conversation, I brought up the idea of the crosswalk in front of this building as well. And I learned an awful lot about different painting techniques and how these faux brick crosswalks are done in other places because you've all seen them here and there. And I'm sorry, but the paint lasts longer than one winter, so.
You, you gotta epoxy those things, you have to.
Yeah, what they have is a thermal, thermal treatment. It's these big sheets, you put them down, you heat them up, and it bonds. And it's physically a quarter inch of material, so you can plow that for a couple of years, a decade before you've worn through it. So I was thinking that while it is more expensive, that might be a good solution here. Of course, when we wanna repaint crosswalks, you know, Montgomery Street, North Road, Pine Street, which is gonna get painted, those are our roads, we can close them, we can have a flagman out there. Anything on Broadway's county road, prevailing wage, lots of flagmen, gets very expensive. So maybe that's one where we don't wanna have the paint, but we wanna have that thermal enamel type material. But yes, it is something we're thinking about and we are gonna have more CHIPS money this year. And that is a possible use of some of that CHIPS money would be to put that in there. Because obviously, it's a bit of a curve. Ever since that chestnut tree came down, people drive really fast there. And there are so many children going back and forth between the library and the parks.
Well, I, you know, Red Hook has them everywhere. And they put the cones out with it. And I think it really slows traffic down. Not only, I mean, does it give you a little safety, a little buffer, a little space to go across the street, but it also has an effect on the traffic flow too.
Yeah, the other detail, I think I mentioned this to you last month, is right where it ought to go, the roadbed is full of cracks straight across the road. So there's a little more to it than just putting down some, some paint, but yes.
Hopefully someday they'll come through the county and repay the, the road.
That's in like, three, three emails and two phone calls has to do with that.
Most is within my life.
While you're emailing, a phone call, can they do something with the fridge down there? I mean, like, just smooth out some of the rough bumps? You had a pretty tough time.
I can ask them, I.
They gotta do something, huh?
They put some patch in there.
Did they?
This week, about four or five, one or five holes they filled up.
I thought the traffic.
They're probably all gone by now.
You know, that's really a bad situation, you know, they open up the car door. I mean, you go slow, you know, someone dashing out between the two cars, I mean, you know, there's parking behind the school, there's other parking, and they're not using it. And I'm here in Tivoli a lot.
Yeah, it's a problem.
I know it's a big thing to do, and I know it's.
It's a problem, I don't know, I mean, we talked about this last month, right? You know, if people don't manage to park right up against the curb, it gets very narrow.
Oh, it is, it's really, a lot of people complain, a lot of people from the outside that are coming in to eat too, they can't find a parking space.
How do we get people that live in, say, the schoolhouse, all those apartments, to use that lot instead of park out front?
Well, you can give tickets, you can find, send a note.
But it's not, I mean, I asked the question because.
Can't you put a sign up, say, "A certain parking," you know, like they do?
Limit the time.
You could limit the time, might be an option.
The easiest way.
That's what I say, you know, because you can't even get to the post office. There's people in Tivoli who live here, can't even get to the post office. They gotta walk way down there, I mean, the children, I mean, you don't care if they, if they park it, but it's like they're, they're all night, all day, I mean, every day.
Right, so in some, you know, downtown Ryback, it's two-hour parking or something like that. So you can't park all night.
Yeah, I think it, it, I mean, they should have enough sense, they're young, that they, that the parking behind the school isn't that far for them to walk.
The thing with the buses and the trucks that are going up, down, probably late here in the morning, it's starting, all day long. Even us, when we come out with the fire truck, I mean, we, there's no, no way to get by, it's, it's impossible. The road is just not wide enough for parking on both sides of the road.
Well, they're not going to.
The trucks and buses.
Stores and stuff, you can't get through.
Not the trucks and buses.
Well, it's not for trucks, not, it's not for trucks or buses or, or whatever.
They can't even pass.
I mean, it's pretty tough, it's pretty close just for cars going down, down the thing. We know that, you know, parking's a premium around here, but, but they're all municipal lots and parking on one side of the road should not be allowed, it just shouldn't be done. It's an accident waiting to happen, a serious accident waiting to happen. Because, you know, it's like mail trucks coming, or, or Bard's buses coming, and we're coming back, and Bard's buses going back, it's really, really tough.
Delivery trucks, because they stay there a while because they have to unload, which is their job, but, you know.
Sometimes they block an entire lane, so. Well, we can certainly, you know, it's been a repeatedly, and repeatedly mentioned and valid concern, I think, so I guess we'd have to look at, yeah, talking to, you mentioned landlords. Maybe some time limit on parking and, you know, we could look into, we'll look into if it could be one side only, that's gonna create a series of other problems, but we consider it.
Well, try the parking thing first, you know, the two-hour parking or whatever, try that first. If that doesn't seem to work, and they're not paying attention to that, and then the landlords, and then we go, you have to take another.
Put some parking meters in, just see how fast they'll, they'll start moving.
Let's make this pay, let's make this problem pay.
You could do it like Rehoboth Beach does, they, they put, they put the parking meters out in the summertime for all the tourists, and when wintertime comes, they remove the parking meters. So you could have it here when all the students are here.
Well, they do now right down in the city, they, they have one parking meter on a corner.
There's always these.
We gotta have the ticket through the window.
All right, so are there any, any other comments on the topic?
I got a couple of closing comments here.
Mr. Cleaver?
There's been a tremendous amount of speeding up and down through here. And I know there, there've caught a couple that I know of, and it still continues. And whether this crosswalk out here would slow them down, I would only hope so. But through this section, there's no reason for somebody to go only fifty-five, sixty miles an hour. It's crazy. And the other thing, the noise at night has died off, I don't know where it went, but it's not in my neighborhood. Somebody else inherited that. Because I'm sure it exists.
Yeah, you know, I think it's gonna be a perpetual.
It's a battle.
It's moving around.
Perpetual thing, we'll have, you know, we can't relax our guard just because we had a quiet couple of weeks or quiet months.
I'm not saying it's quiet every night, but.
Right.
But it's a hundred percent better than what it was.
That is, that is very good news, I'm very pleased to hear it. And for several years, that's been a huge personal concern for me.
You've got a window.
We're just too small, you know, our houses are close together. People need to sleep, people are gonna work, it's just, we can't have that.
Can you find the, people who own the homes that rent to these students? Could you do something?
Not under our current laws, but.
But, you know, it'd be something, it wouldn't be that you really wanna do that, but it would be something to say, "Look."
The deterrent. The deterrent. Absolutely.
Not that you, you know, that you really wanna do something like that, but maybe give them help a little bit, you know, too.
I totally agree with you, yeah. They need to have some skin in the game, so.
I mean, everyone knows they're students and they wanna, you know, but not to the extent that some of this stuff is, I know, it's really tough.
Right, right. Well, I, I, I hope that we're shifting the culture a little bit, but it's, this is gonna take a long time.
It's working.
I think if you get them involved in some of the stuff we do, that might.
Absolutely.
That's what I was, you know, that might help.
Sure.
Dave, is that? Anything else? How's your garden plot?
My garden is, I didn't check it this morning, but I know we got a lot of rain. My seeds may have washed out.
Looks nice over there.
Looks good, though.
And it's very nice.
Yeah, it's coming along. Is there no further comments from the public or the board?
I have one.
Please.
Okay, I just wanted to, I mean, we, we love to have people here to come to these meetings and give us suggestions and your thoughts, and I just, I thought that it would be permissive of me to not say that when you went from, from deputy mayor into mayor, that your workload just kind of, you know, went, went through the roof. But it, it's been a pleasure to see how, what you've taken on and what you've accomplished in a short amount of time, and it's gonna be a real pleasure to see you.
Thank you.